Good evening, welcome to the Villanova Vista Board of Trustees Work Sessions, where we will hear from Envision Chaffee County about fire protection. And I welcome you all here, but please turn off your cell phones, silence your phones. And we will turn this over to the Chaffee, Envision Chaffee, Kim Markey.
Hi, how are you? So thanks for having us back again to talk about this topic. I'm Kim Markey, I'm the Program Director for Envision Chaffee County. And Envision helps facilitate the Chaffee County Community Wildfire Protection Plan. So we help set the agendas and help all of the folks on the Envision Forest Health Council work together to implement the plan. We also do outreach, so we put this nifty little report together every year that you found in your packet. The current Community Wildfire Protection Plan was passed in 2020, so we're on our third year of making all the great things in that plan come together. Thanks again for having us here. There's six, five or six members of the Forest Health Council here to talk with you today about the different aspects of implementing the plan and dealing with wildfire threat and developing our resilience to wildfire in our community. Perry Edwards is here, he's the Salida District Ranger for the US Forest Service. Kent Maxwell is here, he's from Colorado Fire Camp, he's also Battalion Chief with Chaffee Fire. Let's see, not sure if Kyle is on the line with us. Okay, Kyle is with Bird Conservancy of the Rockies, who's partner in putting together one of the projects we're going to talk about tonight. I'm not sure if Chief Bertram is going to be here tonight. And then I'm waiting for Matt from, Michael from the National Forest Foundation. Oh, he's here, hi Matt. He was over at Town Hall, so he made it here in the right place. He's going to talk about a couple of the projects north of town that the National Forest Foundation is managing. So let's go to the next slide, and I just really quick want to review the plan, just in case some of you weren't here in the past year or two, talking about what is this map? And what are we doing with all of these forest treatments and other things related to getting ready for a wildfire to come to Chaffee County? So what you see here is our Treatment Priority Area map. This is one map that has about 50 maps behind it, layered in all kinds of information such as burn probability, the condition of the forest, BB's water resources, and all of the other water resources for the community is in here. Important infrastructure such as communication sites, evacuation, wildlife habitat, that's important, our recreation assets that are important for us to protect from the effects of a really big wildfire, all layered into here, as well as the cost of treating these areas. Mr. Edwards will talk in just a second about the difference of different kind of treatments that we can use, but they all have a different cost. Some areas can't treat, they're too steep, or they're in wilderness areas, or whatever. So we call this the Bang for the Buck map because it shows where we should treat for the highest cost efficiency and community benefit. So a lot of you maybe you've already seen this map, we're wanting to get to these red, orange, and yellow areas. And our goal, it's been our goal is to treat about 30,000 acres by 2030. Again, we're on year three, 10,000 of those acres are fully one-third or on private property. It's not all public lands that we need to treat to protect. Makes sense, right? Because our community is developed, and then it goes out, and then we get to the private, uh, public lands after that. Let's see, let's go to the next slide. Your report talked about high level, where are we at in year three? We've treated over 5,000 acres, we have more than half of the acres in the planning pipeline, so coming down the line, we've raised millions of dollars. Okay, we're doing pretty well. This map is, this map on the right is in the report. The purple is what we've treated, and the teal is what's in the planning pipeline. So I like this because, yeah, we've gotten some work done, but we have a lot more work to do, you know? This is a big goal that we've set and a big challenging issue facing our community. Okay, so what I want to do now is turn it over to the members of the Forest Health Council to talk more specifically. We wanted to come today and zoom more into BB and what's happening around the town and for the town especially related to the water resources. And then hopefully we have time for you guys to ask questions of these folks before seven o'clock. So first, I think I'm going to ask Perry to come up and talk about the Forest Service work that's on that map.
Yeah, my name is Perry Edwards, I'm the Salida District Ranger on the Pike San Isabel National Forest and Simbrough and Bantry National Grasslands, it just rolls off the tongue. And the Forest Service has gotten overall, we've gotten strong support for our programs in fuels and timber, wildlife and range, and these are all tied together in this, when I'll get to that a little bit more. One thing we've had, heard from folks is, you know, we support you doing these prescribed fires, but could you make them less smoky? And the answer is no, whether it's fire or there's smoke. What I would suggest is, would you rather have a week or two of smoke in the spring and fall when we're doing prescribed burns? Or would you rather have smoke all summer with a catastrophic fire where you're wondering if your home's going to burn down, or the entire community might burn down? So those are the trade-offs, I think that we're thinking about this. The Trout Creek Fire that we did last fall was the first one after a 90-day pause in the Rocky Mountain region, the nation as a whole, that the Forest Service stopped for 90 days to relook at our fire program after we had that horrible fire in New Mexico that was a prescribed fire that went awry. So we had all eyes upon us on that, but that fire came out really good. We had, again, we did a lot of public meetings, we did a Zoom meeting, we put up signs all over the place, and yet still a few people are like, what's going on? Why didn't you tell me about this? At some point, we can say, we've tried every way, I don't know where you were, but we're doing our best on that. That fire was about 900 acres, it covered up there in the Trout Creek area, just, would that be southwest of the Chubb Park area? It was very successful in reducing ground fuels. If anything, it maybe wasn't as aggressive as the perfect fire we would like, but it was better to be underwhelmed and overwhelmed. So currently, we're looking at about 600 to 900 acres per year. That sounds like a good number, but then when you think about it, for Salida and Leadville, we're talking about 440,000 acres for Salida, 286,000 acres for Leadville Districts as a whole, that's just a small portion of that. Well, the Forest Service has been working with Colorado Forest Service, Chaffee County, Fire Camp, and a whole bunch of other different players, as well as Lake in Chaffee County. I'm trying to look at the ramping up the fire program, we're looking at about 30% increase to achieve the goals that we're looking at for the Community Wildfire Protection Plan as envisioned as a whole. And to that end, we have hired six more people permanent for our fire folks that are dealing with fire and fuel. So when they're not actively fighting fire, we are working on prescribed fire, whether that's cutting fuel breaks, whether that's doing other trimming trees up to a higher level, so that we're not getting those fires that go from the ground to crown. We do look to manage the National Forest System lands as part of the landscape as a whole. To that end, we had a Forest Health Convocation last December. We had members from Lake and Chaffee County come to that, as well as all the different land managers around, from BLM to Colorado State Fire Forest Service, to NFF, to NRCS, I mean, just had a myriad of alphabet soup groups, and that was really good. Because we were attempting to collaborate between the right acres and the right places, and not just randomly treating here and here, because fire doesn't care who owns the land and who's managing land. We're looking at a landscape scale that we're trying to protect these areas from fires coming in from elsewhere, from fires igniting where we're at. One of the things we think about is, we consider the number of acres we aspire to burn mechanically and treat with prescribed fire. And some of the things we utilize that is, we look at the forest type, we look at forest health, we have dead-dying trees, right, with the buns and spruce budworm and beetle mania going on, if you will. The natural fire returner for these different forest types makes a lot of difference. Because of fire suppression over the last 50 to 100 years, in a lot of areas, we have a lot more ground fuels that we would have had naturally in these areas. And so a lot of times, we have to go in and do mechanical treatments before we do that prescribed fire treatment, so that we have a chance of getting that right outcome, so we're really careful about that. We also look at multiple resource benefits, it's not just about fuels, it's not just about the wildland urban interface, but we're also thinking about forest health fuels, wildlife, range, and timber are all part of that multiple-use sustained yield that is one of the mandates of the Forest Service. So sometimes people don't understand why we do some of the things we do, but the driver might be wildlife, the driver might be range, but we're also looking at all these other, these other resources. One thing I do want to mention, it's important to note that under extreme enough fire conditions, there's really nothing that we can do to stop wildfire. Look no further than the Marshall Fire of December before last, right? It burned down a Costco in the middle of an asphalt parcel lot. How do you fireproof that anymore? There are some folks who feel that because of the treatments we're doing in those really extreme fire conditions, that it may exacerbate those. I would disagree with that, and furthermore, I would say that most of the time, we're not in those super extreme fire conditions. And so we look at the most likely fire conditions we're dealing with, and trying to protect the forest and maintain the forest for those. If it's so extreme and nothing matters, then nothing matters, but we shouldn't throw the baby out with the bathwater and just say, oh, we give up because in really extreme conditions, there's nothing we can do. Some of the current projects, I mentioned Trout Creek that we just did, Railroad Bridge is another one that we're working on, and that's up in the Leadville District, just in northeast of Villanova Vista, they've been working on that for ongoing mechanical treatments, and those are for wildlife, fuels, and timber in there. This fall, we're looking at the Shabro Burns, which is further down towards the Salida area, but we're looking at about 900 acres of prescribed fire to treat that whole area. So really, thank you, we're really buttoning up, buttoning up that area of the southwest portion in there. Future projects, I think are of interest to the folks here, is Jones and Bold Mountain, we're just starting the National Environmental Policy Act, or NEPA, analysis on that. And that area is around Cottonwood Pass, I know that's important because some of the water, the water source for here is part of that. We're also looking at the Westside Project, this would actually be the second entry for fire breaks. The first entry was completed and treated in the early 2000s, it includes Cottonwood North to Ontario Pump Station area. We're also looking at the Three Mile Fire, prescribed firing, which is about 6,000 acres we're looking at in 2024, and that is south of that area, kind of that, of that North Cottonwood area, that we're looking at doing that, and that's going to be a huge area. Again, it's really important to work with all of our partners with this to really build that wall of defense and not leave holes in that, so that's a critical part of it. Also, Herring Park and Bassam area in the Four Mile, we're looking at about 7,000-plus acres in there, and we're working on the burn plans now, likely we'd be starting to do some of that work in maybe fall of 2025. One of the things that we struggle with that North Cottonwood Water Source area is vehicle and equipment access. If you get much further than the trailhead, you're in wilderness, and so our ability to do treatments in there is very difficult. We could, if we did have a fire in there, we could try to manage that fire to do the best we can in there. One of the things that can be really complicated is when we're, when we do have wildland fires, is how do we manage that fire actively? But at the same time, think about that larger landscape as a whole. Sometimes it makes, it makes sense to burn out, let it burn out a bigger box, because if we put that fire out today, and we have very moderate or low fire conditions, we leave a lot of fuels in there. If we have high extreme fire conditions, then we will have to come back and fight another day, or we may not be able to fight another day. But that's what I had, Kim, you want to pass on to the next?
Thanks, so thanks for flipping the slide. Well, now we wanted to kind of zoom in a little bit more on BB area treatments. Matt from the National Forest Foundation is going to talk about those two boxes to the north of BB, the Railroad Bridge and Riverside Projects. BB has contributed over the last few years a combined $30,000 to these projects, so thank you for that. And thanks for coming, Matt, to update us on where we're at with these projects. Notice how they're both on either side of the arc of the river there.
Yeah, thanks for your time. My name's Matt Nagel with the National Forest Foundation, based in Salida. The National Forest Foundation is the official nonprofit partner of the Forest Service, and so we operate as a nonprofit to help generate additional funding and build capacity where the Forest Service might need a lot of extra support. And we are doing that here on the Pike, on the San Isabel National Forest, but we're also beginning to work more and more on both private land and BLM land, because as Perry mentioned, fire can exist and go on any, any land ownership. And so we have currently four NFF staffers in Chaffee County right now, we're looking to add a fifth potentially if we get funding. My position's focused on the forest side, I have a colleague who focuses more on recreation. For these three projects, I'm going to go counterclockwise, and then have Kyle DeShanes, who's on the line, speak to the Riverside component, he's been our partner there. But these three are examples of how the National Forest Foundation can work collaboratively with different partners in the valley. So for the Railroad Bridge project that Perry mentioned, we're working in tandem with the Forest Service on that, because it's on Forest Service land. And we've completed roughly 600 acres of mechanical and hand treatment on the southern end of the project, using a local contractor. Later this fall, we will complete additional, roughly 100 acres, using Rocky Mountain Youth Corps and Southwest Conservation Corps crews to do handwork, essentially near the Taro Pump Station, if you're familiar with that, just up the road. And again, like Perry mentioned, that's for wildlife habitat, fuels reduction, and then also protecting that water infrastructure there. Kyle, if you can hear and if you can chime in, I'll let you summarize some of the Riverside project, and I'll just note before he gets going that this is an example of our work collaborating with the Bird Conservancy of the Rockies as our on-the-ground project lead, and this project is on private land as opposed to Forest Service land. So we've been working with a community of private landowners in the county.
Yeah, thanks, Matt, and thank you for having me tonight. My name is Kyle DeShane, and I'm a wildlife biologist with the Bird Conservancy of the Rockies, and I work in partnership with the NRCS and CPW. And as Matt mentioned, the Riverside Project is encompassing a couple of different private landowners in and around the area of Mountain Meadow Lake subdivision. And so we are about halfway through the project currently. At the end, we will have treated roughly about 400 acres. And this, this project is not only focused on kind of reducing fuels and fire hazard, but also to enhance wildlife habitat. Riverside area is just a really important, critical winter range area for mule deer and elk, and also kind of in the migration corridor for pronghorn and moose and all kinds of different wildlife species. So this is a project where we're really digging in and trying to accomplish multiple objectives. And we're about halfway done, and hope to be done by, by the time summer comes. So that's kind of the update there.
Well, thanks, Kyle. I'll round this off with that third one moving counterclockwise. The, it's a, we often call it the North Cottonwood Project, and this is within the town of Villanova Vista's drinking watershed. This is a project, again, on private land, so we're coordinating with private landowner. But in this case, the Colorado State Forest Service is our partner, so they're operating as the project on-the-ground lead, managing the contractor doing that work. NFF's working the contracting side and managing landowner agreements that give us permission to enter their land and do the design and layout of the project, and then ultimately have a contractor come in and do the work. This project is very similar to the others in the sense that it's reducing the risk of the impacts of a severe wildfire, but also benefiting wildlife habitat. This project, we are currently still in the design and layout phase, we hope to have that done sometime later this summer, and then have a request for proposal go out around that time too, to solicit contractors who would ultimately do the work, potentially starting this fall. And with the idea that potentially completing it by the end of the year or by the end of the following year, and it would be roughly 170 acres of treatment there. And again, it's, all of these projects light up in the CWPP, which is a big reason why we focused in on treating these areas. That's all I have, I'm happy to answer questions when we round off at the end.
Thanks, Matt. I felt to mention that Commissioner Keith Fager is here from Colorado. Thanks for coming. He's been super involved on the council and helped us out as we developed the plan, and now for three years implementing the plan. So Kent's going to talk next, I'm sorry, we're running a little bit behind, but Kent from Colorado Fire Camp has worked really hard addressing the town's water supply through some treatments in the North Cottonwood Drainage, working with Trail West and Game.
Kent Maxwell is Colorado Fire, Chief County Fire, so I'm the Battalion Chief for the south end of the county. So coming to the Villanova Vista Town Council meetings the last several years, always the response back is, well, North Cottonwood. And so in combination with the National Forest Foundation, working with the Trail West Young Life Camp, for the project that they'll have contracted out, we had the opportunity through Colorado Department of Natural Resources and the COSWOP around the Colorado Strategic Wildfire Action Plan, so some of the infrastructure money, it was kind of presented as a one-off time, but now it looks like the Colorado Legislature will have this ongoing program for workforce development. So we were awarded $295,000 worth of crew time, so 25 weeks of a chainsaw crew with Southwest Conservation Corps, really trying to improve SCC's capacity to do chainsaw work and get them, get the opportunity to develop leaders within the youth and give them vocational job skills. So we were able to also get a $70,000 grant for training, train them as wildland firefighters, train them as sawyers, and then put them to work in Trail West subdivision, HOA property has a 40-acre piece off at the end of County Road 340, and then working in Game Trail subdivision, 400-some lots, 300 homes in Game Trails, so the largest subdivision in Chaffee County, and trying to harden the assets, as it were, so that ultimately the firefighters and the instant command team that comes in has a choice of not trying to choose protecting homes over the watershed and all the other resource benefits. And so 45 landowners offered up their land. An active phase, there's still a lot of slash that we have to pick up off of County Road 365 from last year, cutting, and then continuing to work with the subdivisions working close to homes and balancing all of the needs that the landowners have, all of the reasons why they may choose to treat their property or not choose for wildfire, resource benefits, wildlife, aesthetics, privacy. And it becomes a big conversation that involves building community, which is one of the biggest things that we're trying to do to get Trail West to become a firewise community, Game Trail became a firewise community last year, and everybody working together on the same page is what we're after. If you, I had some slides there to show on some of the sawyers, some of the work that we're doing, creating firewood, hauling out slash, and teaching basic job skills, thinking about who's going to do this work, and who are the contractors ultimately going to hire to do the work? And maybe I think there's one more slide, how to operate a saw, the women's, there's a color crew from Southwest Conservation Corps. Additionally, thinking about the loss of the state inmate fire crew from the Villanova Vista Correctional Facility, and so we were able with the cooperation of Chaffee County Fire to red card 22 of the crew members as wildland firefighters. We turned out to have not a fire season last year, this year, we're still looking at the possibility of who is going to help supplement or fill in the gap of how we had multiple fires that the inmates over the years were able to help us stop a fire that could have otherwise been problematic. And that was the, one of the crews that was working, and future projects and other subdivisions around the county that we want to work with.
Thanks, Ken. We're really lucky to have a fire training school like Ken's here. It's pretty neat that we're training folks and then also getting the benefit of them getting on-the-job training to help with doing these projects. These kids are great, I call them kids, they're college students, but... So anyway, all right, let's see what we have left here. The Colorado State Forest Service couldn't make it tonight, but I want to just quick tell you what's coming up, and then we'll go to questions, if that's okay. I realize we're, we got one minute, but. I think, so the subdivisions listed on this slide, actually, we are working already. And so that's from north-south, you can go back one more. So if you know anyone who lives in Game Trail or Trail West, or any of those that were listed there, thank you. I consider those homeowners heroes for all agreeing, you know, if enough folks don't agree, we can't create an effective project, it's not going to happen. Okay, so go forward one slide, please, and one more. Colorado State Forest Service is doing the same work that Kent and Matt described, working with homeowners to connect projects so that they're effective. We don't want to just treat one property here and one property over there, we want them to be connected. This is in Three Oak, and so this one's coming up, 25 acres, this one benefits the water resources there, the riparian area, it's about 25 acres in the Pinions, they're reducing around the creek. Some of you might know some folks who live there in Three Oak. The project actually is halfway complete, and it should be done hopefully this year. Next slide, this one's pretty cool, this is a real obvious fuel break. You can see Rodeo Road on the bottom right-hand side of this picture, and so we are wanting to protect lots of resources that we have on the other side of that fuel break. We call this the base of Mount Princeton Fuel Break, it's on Maxwell State Land and the Frontier Ranch property. It helps protect Pine Grove Estates, Lost Creek Ranch, Journey's End, Whispering Pine, Black Forest, so a lot of different neighborhoods in there. That's starting this month, and it'll be done by July. So, sorry again, we're a little bit over, a lot of things going on, I know we're throwing a lot of information at you. The CWPP is focused on treating the right areas to get those benefits, but it also includes things like helping the community prepare, hence we have Chaffee Tips. It talks about post-fire recovery, so there's other elements of the CWPP, it's not just about treating land. Okay, I'm going to be quiet now and let you guys hopefully, and however much time Lisa wants to give us here, answer, ask some questions, because it's wonderful to have all these folks come from up here.
Anyone have questions they'd like to ask tonight? Or you can also communicate with, with you guys by email, right?
Yes, if you want to ask us questions later, Lisa can send them to me, and I will help get them answered. We're always happy to come back, or help via email, or whatever works for you guys. We just want to make sure you feel comfortable about what's happening.
I have a question.
I just have a quick question, or at least quick for me. Do you, is any of the federal funding that's coming into the states, is that helpful to you in your project, or is that part of what your grant applications are for? I guess Keith, you might know some of that too.
Yeah, if you can go ahead, I added a couple of slides here just to answer some questions, so bump ahead, there we go. So this might help answer that, it's in the, this year's report. I don't know if any of you want to address the federal funding question, we're getting funding from everywhere we possibly can. And again, the amount that BB has, has provided for some of these projects, it's great, because it helps us show the federal and the state level funders that you all are supportive of this, you're supportive of that particular project, it's really helpful. But you can see here, we've raised 23 million, I think it was, when we did this report, directly from federal agencies is almost 20%, and then 33, a third, more than a third from federal grants. We're getting state grants, Kent talked about that, Governor Coolis put, I think it was 19 or 14 million? I can't remember exactly, you know, and we got a million dollars from that for this valley. Utility companies are doing work that we didn't talk about today, but I'm happy to come back and talk about that. And then that local funding is from the Chaffee Common Ground Fund.
And I guess I would add to that, all that adds to matches that can be for federal, for all these different things. And my experience has been, the more partners, the more flabberies you have, the more other outside funders want to dogpile onto that. And so there's really that cumulative impact that is greater than the sum of the partners.
Thank you.
But to answer a little bit from my perspective, but to...
But to answer a little bit from my perspective with your questions, too, is that this is one part of a broader ecosystem, landscape-scale terrain management program. Fire is just one threat, you know, that we face. And so there are lots of programs and lots of funding available now for things like stormwater runoff and flood mitigation and lots of other factors. And now that Beth Lenz is on board with the Upper Arkansas Area Council of Governments, that gives us further opportunity to look at some of those other fields. But as Perry and then Kent were speaking a little bit ago, one of the things I really enjoyed about this whole exercise when we updated the CWPP, because we had one before, it was fairly rudimentary and it answered the requirement, but it wasn't this detailed and this involved. But this reminded me a lot of my previous career when we would do a lot of terrain analysis and identifying avenues of approach, critical vulnerabilities, and strategic points. And that's really why a lot of these areas are identified, because we can't treat the entire forest, and we don't really need to. But there are areas of the forest which are more subject to fire. And if they do become a fire, they put higher values at risk, like critical infrastructure, power lines, cell phone towers, as we saw from the fire down to the southeast a few years ago. We were knocked out for a couple of days because some vital infrastructure got knocked down. And then, oh, when we had the fire that came over Methodist Mountain, it rendered some of the cell service inadequate down there. So this is all, you know, a part of that. And the reason that we've identified these areas up here, it's like Perry mentioned, your water district, our water district. I'm not just an observer. I'm also, Railroad Bridge is the same as other areas. So I think we are getting some notoriety, some good notoriety for what we've done. I won't say we're years ahead of some other communities. There are other communities that have done a really good job. Jefferson County is doing a fantastic job, especially considering their situation there and their wildland urban interface. But then the other element of this is there is a legislative component of this, like getting money. Getting, there's a WUI Commission, a Wildland Urban Interface Commission being named, which is supposed to, to help with codes and zoning and other things that can be done at state level. Senate Bill two thirteen, which you've heard about, it's theoretically about housing, but it does have a major land use component to it. That's a part of it. The Co-Swap Program that Kent mentioned, and lots of other things. So this is a vital, important part, but it's really just one part of the overall picture of trying to do all these other elements that can help us with our wildfire mitigation program.
Thanks. Thank you all.
Yeah, we appreciate your, your focusing on our groundwater on North Cottonwood Creek. And then every time the wind blows from the north, I thank you in my mind for the work that you've done up there.
Well, we'll keep coming back and updating you, and yes, always happy to answer questions. We've talked a lot about fundraising and treatments that we're doing, but as the outreach person coordinator for the Forest Health Council, it's really hard for me to walk away from a podium without talking about community preparedness. So, you know, everyone should be ready to evacuate. And, you know, as Perry kind of talked about it, also, a lot of these folks would say it's not if, it's when fire comes. So we'll be doing some outreach later this year to help people sign up for Everbridge and get their family evacuation plans together. And I'm happy to come talk about that.
We would appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you all of you for coming.
Thanks for your time.
Great. So we move right into our meeting. Is everybody okay with that?